Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, you have some extra items for the agenda on the page. And I'd like to add those right now, if you'll go to page six. We will be adding, no, I mean, page seven, sorry. We will be adding these as number eight. After number seven, the policies, we'll add number eight for the green sheets. Okay? All right. With that said, a motion please to approve the agenda. Tina and Linda, discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. Pardon me? Motion, do you want? I just did. No, I put them right with the, with the agenda. If we added them later on, then we would have, had, had a special motion. At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for the board to discuss a particular person and contracts. Motion, Linda, Jason? Discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried. To all of you who are zooming in, we will be leaving for, well, our 25 minutes, so you're a little bit longer than that. We'll be back in about half an hour, probably. So, we'll, we'll look for you then.
So at this time, I'll ask the public to sign out, please. We are, yes.
We will, welcome back, we will return now to our agenda. We will go to reports and correspondence. And Linda, you have some news about Port County? Yes, Legislative Committee met on Saturday, and the discussion's really centered around possible resolution to forward to NISBA to get them together and send them. Two of them that came up, one was about issues that have to do with audits for school districts. And the, the topic seemed to be that the state will come in and audit, but you don't always know exactly what they're looking for, or what, what their guidelines are, what their expectations are. So, we're going to be working on that to send through NISBA so that within a reasonable period of time, each district should know what they're expected to have prepared for them. The second thing was about teachers that moved into New York State and were certified in other states, how difficult it is sometimes for them to get certification approved so that they can actually be employed in New York State. That's something that the committee felt we needed to do a lot more research on so that we have more specifics to put in a resolution. So that'll be something they're working on in the future. But hopefully, the issue with audits for school districts will go forward for this year. Stay tuned for work on it. Great, thank you, Tina. Port County School Boards is very proactive with, with the legislatures, the New York's of proposing improvements to their legislature. The Policy Committee, John, would you like to talk about the policies that are proposed here for the first read?
We have a number of first reads. I just summarized what they are, 7410 is extracurricular activities, and they basically are clubs and things that kids get involved in, not through our taxes, they are, they, they fund themselves through fundraisers, et cetera, and there are definite rules to the running of clubs, reporting of money. They have a student advisor or faculty advisor, and there are rules about how they proceed as well. They also talked about limited open forums, unrelated to educational programs. They have to be voluntary on the behalf of students, and they're not supposed to be based on, relying officially through religion, political views, or philosophies. And employees are non-participatory. So if you're there as a faculty member, a staff member in general, you should not attempt, you cannot, you're not supposed to participate in an active manner other than having students of a certain age, appropriate type thing. Policy 7521, students in life-threatening health conditions, that one's pretty easy and boilerplate. The, the thing we question is that we do have EpiPens in the district, and we do furnish, we do have them on hand in case there's a severe allergy of bee bite or whatever the student has a problem with, or staff member. And each student who has a serious problem has a medical care plan in place, that's by the physician, to the nurse's office. So there is a plan in, in place for that kid. 7530 is child abuse and malt treatment, that's pretty much boilerplate as well. It lists the people who are required to report in schools, the people, that, staff members, bus drivers, teachers, teacher aides, assistants, administrative secretaries, everyone. If they see evidence of child abuse, they're, they have to report it. And they usually, there's a step procedure in reporting, and usually it ends up in the principal's hands for investigation. And then they have rules about if it's the principal having, having done the child abuse, then they, somebody else has to be the report, the report source. And then they go through everyone. Actually, board members can be reporters as well. And we, if we hear about abuse, we're supposed to report to the principal or whoever is appropriate. There's no liability if you do the reporting and good faith. You're not, in other words, if you think there is abuse and then good faith, you report it, and there isn't, you, you're not liable for it, there's no, in the law, there's no liability for that. On, if it's unfounded, the report is kept for five years and then destroyed or sooner. And the district must give a training or to staff members about the reporting of child abuse. 7550 dignity to all students, for all students, basically has to do with harassment of students and bullying. One employee per district is the coordinator of that, and they list the areas of harassment such as gender and age, mental, physical, on and on and on, there's all sorts of, having been in schools, kids are quote-unquote bullied for a lot of different reasons. We have to name the coordinator nowadays. We have, we can't just say coordinator, we have to name the person so that if you go to the policy, you know who to go to. And it must go into the school code of conduct as well. 7690 is the special ed mediation, and that's just straight regs. When you have special ed, it's bound by laws and regulations. 8230 is instruction in certain subjects, and I thought that was a strange way of saying things, certain subjects. There's things like driver ed, gifted and talented students, we must have a procedure for selection of students. And that's super important, having lived that as well. PE classes, it sets the requirements for physical education, how many minutes per week? And if you have semester one, semester two, if you have a block schedule, if you have regular schedules. The only way you could be excused from physical education legally is by the doctors. You have a broken bone, dislocation, concussion, and so on, so forth, and you're have to have a doctor's note. Health and mental health education, that's been a change in nomenclature, and it is to cover its curriculum, that's a course they teach. It's mental health, drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, and cancer prevention, and so, designation. And they did say in the policy thing that most schools are doing a sex ed type approach, but it's not like it's in the curriculum written and stolen, you have, it's kind of give and take a little. And the last one is 76, 5676, privacy and security of student data, teacher and principal data. And it's based on breaches that we hear all over the place, most of the major companies in the country, even meatpacking, pipeline, oil pipelines, they will have breaches, and that can happen to a school. Was it Victor, one of our schools, Victor had a breach or a ransomware type thing. The district must report it if there's a breach. And ironically, Mr. Megan was talking about that as well several years ago, and we now have under liability reserves in our budget. We have, we monitor for $200 a name. So every time there's a name, the kid comes into the district or is here, we, we have soft, we have software that takes care of that, and we have, we have coverage for $40,000 for that, I look back at the, your report. That's the first read, so next time we meet, we'll hopefully vote on it, if there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, the consent agenda goes over through page six. And that way to cut down. So, a motion please to approve the consent agenda. Paul and Tina? Questions, discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. We now go to page six, number six. These are items that normally, in, in number six, number A and B, would normally be in the consent agenda, but they were pulled out for separate vote because a board member, board member, each of them needs to abstain because a family member is mentioned in the vote or in the resolution. So, number six, a motion to approve the program appointments that are funded by grants. John and Paul? And Jason, you'll be abstaining, right? Okay, so Tina, you want to call, call the rule?
Yes, Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yeah.
Jason?
Staying.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta, absent. Thank you, motion is carried.
Thank you, motion is carried. And now, number six, B, is a motion to approve the members who will serve on the leadership council. A motion, Jason and Linda? And I believe John, you'll be abstaining on this one, correct? Okay, Lynn, Tina, will you call the rule?
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Abstaining.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Izetta is absent, thank you, motion is carried.
Thank you, motion carried. Item seven, policy. This is a second read, these were brought forward at our last meeting for the first read. And now they're here for the second. A motion to approve the policies. Jason, Paul? Discussion. John, is there anything you want to say about these before we vote?
As Paul mentioned, last time, the military recruiters has been handled under a different policy. That's why we're deleting 7242, because it's already covered under another policy. But doesn't mean that we're not allowing military recruiters or college recruiters to visit our kids. It means it's just in a different policy.
Thank you for clarifying. Any other discussion? Then, all in favor of approving the policy? Motion is carried. At this time, we move over to the green sheets, the, that we added at the beginning when we approved the agenda. The first item is to, is A, to approve the memorandum of agreement. Is there a motion? Jason, John? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Next, items B, to appoint teacher blank, Blake Embry, or Ember, pardon me, and C, the summer curriculum writing and professional development. Those will handle together, a motion to approve those. Linda and Paul? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. And on the last page, this is a motion to approve the North Rose Woke at Teachers Association time trade gratification. Motion please, Tina and Jason? Discussion?
How many, how many years is this coming?
I'm sorry, there should be three years, it should be June 30th, 2024.
July 20, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. It's three, and I believe that Mr. Sloan had to abstain from the vote. So, but yes, it's a three-year contract, yeah, thank you.
In the other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Cinda?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yeah.
Jason?
Staying.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta is absent, thank you, motion is carried.
Motion is carried. Going there to the agenda? Is there any good news that anyone wants to share?
Keenan, here's the news, all right.
Okay, Eric Kemp, the 2011 graduate, was one of our basketball players with the name as the head basketball coach for Alfredton first.
Really?
It's a great big deal.
That's great, just found out.
And congratulations.
He worked the wheels for a while.
And he's graduated from those, remember? Yes. But you're just staying this week. Oh, yeah. I didn't cite source. Anyone else?
Student of the month, Rotary Club Student of the Month, Hannah Madison from the sixth grade was selected for the May Student of the Month. And she's ever learning remotely, but her teacher said she shows up every day at class and is invariably the first student there. So again, online, but she completes every assignment, asks for help, does dinner, and frequently helps other students, so. Well deserved. We, we talked a lot about Abby Joanna, and here's another one. She, so she was selected as the first place winner of the Long Island University Student of Roosevelt Public Speaking Contest. This was a national contest. She was one of the top 10 finalists and in one first place, so, again, cool for Abby Jo. Dean's List students, Nazareth College Dean's List, Emily Graham from Woke, she was studying Spanish. I got some athletic awards that I'd like to mention, not awards, recognition. Track championship, Jack Defoe won the 800 meter, and then was recognized as the Pinker Lakes' third team All-Star. Voice tennis for North Rose Woke at all the semifinals this year. Quentin, Quentin Norris was also first team All-Stars. Skylar Cole and Sebastian Houchlockwood were first team All-Stars doubles in tennis. And then Lucas Crane and Jeffrey Wanek were honorable mention. South Holy Ghost Stars, first team Shelby Couture, second team Brandon Vizos, and third team, correction, second, another second all-team was Grace King. Baseball stars for the All-County, Cody Howie was the second team, and also Nick Gilbert. And I thought it was kind of interesting, Nick Gilbert's a freshman. So, pretty, pretty interesting there. One last one, a golfer, Zach DeRue was selected as a Wayne County second team All-County. So lots of nice awards going on for our athletes. And the athletic awards ceremony was just awesome, like it is for me here, yes. And I would add to that, if I may, the art show and, and the concert, boy, it just, well, you know, the students always just wow you. They do such a great job on holiday, and even with their mask on and singing, it was just a wonderful week.
Thank you.
I noticed in the newspaper, Michael Statsky was a model cum laude, some such thing, recent newspaper.
I didn't see that, but he's, what it was, is he, what it must have been, they said he was on the president's list again at collection, but also Connor Reyes, Connor Reyes was also, so two high school graduates from North Rose Woke a couple of years ago, up at collection, just doing well.
Great, great to hear. Yep, all right. We'll move now to the superintendent's update.
So my portion is really pretty brief. You know, just going to take a, a quick moment to celebrate a few things. Tina pulls it up, you know, our school year's coming to a close. These kids have definitely shown a lot of resiliency and grit. That's a theme that I think you're going to see present through many of the end of the year celebrations, whether it's pre-K, middle school, or high school, there's a lot of good things that we're celebrating. So our staff and students will end their day together on the 24th, they're celebrating that date. Many good things happening, so we'll start right there on the screen, as you can see it. Had the pleasure of attending the fourth grade graduation yesterday out front. You could see we have a very charismatic class that's, you've done a great job this year. Really transitioning from the hybrid model early in the year to back four days a week in person, a lot of success. Really great day to celebrate the students at North Rose Woke at Elementary. And, you know, we, we said we couldn't think of a better group of students to transition into eleven where, when it opens up in the fall. And then today, you know, we had an opportunity to go down and see our UPK students graduate. So, our four-year-olds did a wonderful job. You see Mrs. Gushu and Mrs. Sensorboat, and Mrs. Patterson's not on the screen, but, you know, we, we heard from them with Mrs. Barr, I believe about a month ago, all the great things that are happening. So today was their culminating event, and, you know, one of the nice things between the last board meeting that we had and today was, we had our seniors process through the elementary campus, and then our UPK students follow rate behind them. So, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't ask for a better day to see the bookend. So that was today. And then, you know, just a reminder that this Friday night commencement for our class of 2021 will be on the soccer field, we're really looking forward to that. So school board members who are attending and staff members who are attending, we're expected to gather in the high school gymnasium at 5:30. We are doing it out on the soccer field, we are looking forward to a great event, really to kind of wrap up, and, and again, for this particular class, you know, the last two years, they definitely had to overcome some obstacles and some challenges. And, you know, these students are clearly showing us a bad way forward. You know, they made the most out of every opportunity, they didn't sit there and dwell on the obstacle, but focused on the opportunities, and, you know, I think Abby Jo summarized it best to say, look, things weren't ideal, but they were what they were, and they made the most of them. So, just looking forward to Friday night's activities. You know, again, bringing the past several months to a close and starting to get back to some normalcy. And then with that, just want to say thank you to all of our student presenters. On the list you see in front of you, we've had several students present to the Board of Education. I think that it's a great representation of what's happening here at North Rose Woke at, all the things that we have to be proud of and to celebrate. And I think in terms of, we've got our technical education students there with Alexis and Brandon, and then Zach Burnett. You remember when Dr. Ramos and the P-Tech people presented, what a wonderful job they all did. So I think that for me, one of the best things was to hear directly from our students each month and hear what they're excited about, and get some feedback on what they think we could do better. And there were a few of those comments shared as well. So I just want to thank those student presenters this year. And that's pretty much it for me, a, a great year, and, like you say, looking forward to closing out the same thing.
Speaking as one board member, I really appreciate having those students here, and I hope that we can continue that next year, gives us a wide view of what the kids see, which is the important part.
Yes, and as we're talking about a, a year and finishing up, Mr. Cohen, you're finishing up your first year with us, and we've been delighted to have you with us, and we're equally delighted to have you with us again next year.
Thank you.
We look forward to the, the continual improvements to our district and all the good things that we have for our kids, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I do want to tell public, we do plan to start our, July, July starts the school year. And we do plan to get back at our regular meetings in July. Our first meeting is going to be on July 6th, right after a big celebratory Fourth of July weekend. So, that will be our organizational meeting, we'll be back at the high school. The public certainly is invited once again. We will be putting our public access, our public access time in the agenda again, we look forward to that. But we're also going to provide the public with a, a Zoom similar to what is here right now, so that you can be at home and just watch the whole thing. If you want to see something in particular, you better come to the, to the meeting. But one way or another, we hope you will continue to join us. At this time, we are moving back into executive fashion. At this time, we are moving back into executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular person and contract. Can I have a motion please to that effect? John and Tina? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We'll say goodnight to you, the public. We will not be coming back to do any business. We will come back and session to adjourn, and that will be all. So goodnight to you all, and hope to see you in July.